Order at 7:36. And proposed executive session 2.1 Contract Matter Individual Employee, 2.2 Contract Matter Individual Employee, and 2.3 Contract Matter Individual Employee. Motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Agreed.
So moved. We'll see you later. Everybody's good. Call to order.
All right, Mia.
We went into executive session at 7:36 PM. Discussed 2.1 Contract Matter Individual Employee, 2.2 Contract Matter Individual Employee, and 2.3 Contract Matter Individual Employee. And if we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
It feels like we started the day with a pledge. We started the day with a pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate, and just as law.
So we are entering into public meeting at 8:24 PM. Any comments from the public? Hearing none. We will start with the oath of office. Ms. Laris Dangle.
Just ask you to stand and raise your right hand. And just read that statement.
I do soundly swear to affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Byram Hills School District Board of Education member for the term of three years according to the best of my ability.
Yay!
Just need to sign it.
Yep. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
All in favor? And a motion to approve consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. For personnel, special services, and business. One more time.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Okay.
Can I pause at that moment just to say that we accepted a donation of $20,000 from the Byram Hills Education Foundation for the funding of Easter Lance? Thank you very much to the B H E F. That is very much appreciated.
Yes, thank you for their continued and always generous support. And we're moving on to item nine, unfinished business.
And board goals.
Right?
Okay, so I did go into board goals in detail at the last board meeting. But remember that we are keeping the same subtopics for our board goals. But I'd like to talk a little bit about the new curriculum and innovation in teaching and learning, particularly for K-5. Just the literacy study takeaways from last year, leading us to reviewing and piloting phonological and phonemic awareness program in kindergarten, continuing to study the program as tier two and three interventions, purchasing high-interest decodable texts for classroom teachers, organizing the book bank for easy access. Very well underway with that already. Piloting a word study program for grammar and vocabulary, developing the scope and sequence for Orton-Gillingham. I want to say that we have, is it 12 teachers? 10? Who are going for the practical right now for the Orton-Gillingham. That's pretty amazing.
Very intensive process.
Very intensive.
And two graduate level courses.
And professional learning for literacy instruction for K-5 teachers. Now we have our ALA advisories in place and engaging families in that. And also advanced learners program at the K-5 level that has really been reinvigorated with dedicated staff. And reviewing math intervention programs and MTSS plan. That is mostly the K-5 work for 612. We're really happy about the seal of civic readiness and the seal of biliteracy that they're working on. Study the science curriculum. We are going to have a tri-states visit for our science in the fall of 2024. And professional learning in DBT, dialectical behavior therapy with special education and professional support staff. Amazing. We have the second year of our entrepreneurship program startup, studying upgrading practices at the high school led by Chris Walsh, and continue to develop student leadership skills and opportunities. And then just K-12 overall, guidelines for curriculum and instruction decisions, but also looking at the impact of artificial intelligence. I also want to thank Dwayne Smith and Kevin Guadati, who are going to be presenting to the superintendents in Westchester at my next meeting about AI and its implications for schools. And our character education and art and music programs with our new director of fine arts. We continue to look at the data as an important point. Implement and train administrators in branching minds to help us with our data story. Social emotional learning, continuing with character education, also that DBT training. And security threat assessment team training. Gina is doing a tremendous job with that reunification annex as well. Cybersecurity, as we've heard from Kevin Guadati, everything he's working on in that area. And then really long-term outlook. This is a lot with Kelly, doing some big projects right now on converting the bus fleet, incorporating alternative energy, looking at our field usage and potential for additional turf. And monitoring pension and healthcare contribution costs. I just sent Scott something last night that I was looking at. Health, rising health costs amongst other things. And leadership development. Proud to say that we have our very own employees who are in a doctoral program right now. One very one Gina Cunningham, who is doing that and also a teacher at the high school who's part of that doctoral program. Jen Layden just graduated from that doctoral program. And we have quite a few teachers who are in the FSLA program for future school leaders. And that's tremendous. And then education reform and advocacy. We have many conversations about that in this group, about what New York State School Boards is anticipating as their advocacy agenda and what Westchester-Putnam School Boards is also going to be advocating for. And for the most part, us understanding that sometimes when things don't impact us, it does impact public education. And as servants of public education, we look at education for all students in public setting. So those are the goals. And I didn't know if there were any questions since the last time.
One question for you on the data goal. So is it, this is consistent with, I guess, Tim, what you presented, which is mostly trying to come up with data sources for buildings to use, for teachers to use. Is any component of this related back to sort of like looking district level? And from almost like a board standpoint to be able to track data? Or is that not this year? Is that more maybe a next year year goal? After you do this piece of it?
Yeah, it's part of the conversations that Kevin and I are having about data and what would be data that we could source? And how would we source that data? Through some sort of mechanism, some sort of platform like a dashboard? So we are looking at that, whether it's something we can get going this year. I don't know that at this point.
Okay.
But we are playing with some ideas and looking at.
So maybe this makes sense for this year.
Right.
And then obviously to make more progress, great. Otherwise for next year, this could be a...
Right. And some of the questions we're engaging in, as Kevin hit upon, that his presentation was thinking about what type of data would be relevant and appropriate to show? And trying to think about that as well. Without, you know, we have to be careful of data that could identify students and anything like that. So we're trying to think about how, what would we aggregate in a way that would make sense and help us understand some things?
And then for the thought I had was just one thought on the number or the fiscal accountability communications. There's just some duplicates, I think. We can just, it's such a long list, we can consolidate. Like for instance, the field usage, I think, comes up twice. So we can just maybe just consolidate it into once. And the bus, electric buses, which are important, but that shows up twice. So we can just consolidate it into once. And then review tax implications because we also have a tax cap on there. So that can probably come out just to make it a little bit shorter. I think those are the three.
Okay. So do we need to weigh in? All the provisions up? Do we have to vote?
I think we can, you can vote those corrections accepted.
Corrections.
So can I have a motion to approve the board holes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? New business, 10.1, the assessment report.
Thanks, Scott. I had that one.
It's very squeaky.
Very squeaky. At least I'm not the only one.
Okay, so that's not my first day of kindergarten, but I thought that job was adorable. So it's my new favorite thing to see at Coman Hill are the students drawing pictures of themselves on it.
And the best is watching Tim decide which picture he should put on there. Gina and I are having fun with it. It was so cute.
I had a whole slew of my favorites. Which one is my favorite? They're adorable. And Gina's analyzing what it means about the kids' perception of themselves. This was one of my favorites. So every year around this time, I present in the September board meeting, I present usually the New York State assessment data. And as similar to last year, the state test results are still under embargo. So they have not been released to the public yet. They haven't, New York's, the State Education Department has not told us what that date is, as far as I know. So we have gotten, just so you know, they do give us the student data and the item analysis of the test results in July. So we can use that data in order to determine academic support services for students in both ELA and math. So we have those test results. And we do use them in the summer so that we can start right away in September with groups to the best of our ability. What we don't have are the performance levels. And the data is not released publicly. So we can't share that data with the public or Board of Education or with parents. So I did receive the performance level data last Wednesday. That was released, but we can't share it at this point. So I will present, I'll do another presentation for you. What's the... Do you think we must come up with cut scores? Is that really what it is? It's the cut scores, yeah. So those were determined. Now we just released it. So they do whatever analysis they do to determine the cut scores. And I assume now that the data's been released. I have those, that level data now. I assume that the state ed is working on their presentation. They usually do a giant PowerPoint presentation with their analysis from a statewide level. So at that point, they'll let us know and we can share this data. And I'll begin, I'll present the scores to you. So our initial look at it, so I'm not allowed to talk about it publicly, but I'm excited to share those results with you. So I can say that much at this point. So we will look at other types of data as I always include in my report. So I thought I'd share that piece with you and some new data that we have that I included in your packet. So we'll look at some other measures. If pictures alone are enough for us, you can see here that we have our science research. So we have students that create authentic science research projects in our district. And that is an indicator of success. We have students here in our middle school that code robots. And they are constantly testing their knowledge of coding and robotics. And then if smiles could capture success, I think this child does it beautifully. Who wouldn't smile like that when kids get to play with worms and soil in elementary schooling? So this was part of our science curriculum last year. So let's look at a few things. Some other data that I can share. We look at our advanced placement exams over time. So looking from 2018 to 2023, these graphs show the percent of students scoring at a level three or better. If you recall, the AP tests are scored on one through five, where three is the minimum benchmark for meeting standards, that you've met the course requirements. So you can see generally, our data is pretty consistent, around 91, 92%, with maybe a peak there in 2020. If you recall, that was the pandemic spring. So the students took it online at the last minute. And then in 2021 was the pandemic year. So I'm actually surprised that wasn't lower. But 85% wasn't bad for that first pandemic year. And down here at the bottom, you see that we had 339 students in 2023 who took exams. And that was a total of 726 exams that those 339 took. So it's a little over, on average, two exams per student.
Has that been consistent over the years, that number?
It's been going up, actually. More students taking more exams. Right, it's been consistent in the last several years. We haven't added that many AP courses. But if you were to track this back over two decades, that was a, it's a big change, increase.
Is there a difference in junior level courses and senior level courses?
I haven't analyzed it at that level. From my experience, when I was math chair, I would see that difference specifically in statistics because juniors and seniors could take it.
Right.
So when students were always wondering whether they should take a junior or senior year, I always encouraged them to take a junior year because chances are they would do better because generally the more engaged junior year than senior year. That's the reality of it. Yeah, so that's what I noticed only of the statistics course. I don't know if that pattern still exists now or not, but 20 years ago.
You can do that with environmental science too. And physics, right? Yeah, with the science programs.
Yeah, so I'm sure there is. So you know, what we do with that AP data is Chris Walsh shares it with the chairs and directors, who then turnkey that data to their teachers who teach the AP courses. Because we have all this disaggregated data by student in each course and the spread of scores from one to five. So teachers always analyze that so they can look at their practice. And that's part of our summer curriculum work, where they work together and think about, okay, so these are my results. Is there anything I need to tweak in the curriculum?
Do they get granularity about where the weakness is? If it's a weaker score or is it just a score? The teachers?
Yeah, we don't get that, that I'm aware of. I don't think we get any item analysis or anything beyond just the score that I know of.
Got it.
I don't think so. We have our science research data, which we're quite proud of. And this is an amazing chart that shows the strength of our science research program. Since 1991, we've had 596 students go through this three-year program. And of those 596 students, 22%, more than one in five students have been recognized as a top scholar, which is pretty incredible. And of those 132 students, 22 have been finalists. So that's a pretty incredible result of our science research program. And thanks to our amazing science research team and the parents who support these students through that three-year program. It's not easy. College acceptances, a chart we're also very proud of and which just every year amazes me. And we see this number. And I always think at some point it's going to start declining, and it never does. We always have this amazing percentage of students who get into the top colleges in the country. So as a reminder for our public there, this is, these are ratings by barons, and they have six levels of ratings. Tier one and tier two colleges range from the most competitive to highly competitive colleges, which make up approximately 11% of the colleges in the U.S. They're, and by competitive, we mean difficult to get into. And so we get 81% in 2023. 81% of our students got into the top 11% of colleges. And that statistic alone is just shows the value added to Byram Hills Education, that we get such a high percentage into the top colleges. So that's a real mark of pride in our district and for our faculty who work to prepare our students. So some new data element I want to share with you. I included a full report in your packet of this particular assessment. So last year, we decided to administer a benchmark assessment. This is a test, not the exact same test as PISA. We might have heard of PISA, which stands for the Program for International Student Assessment. Program of International Student Assessment, I believe. And there's an organization, the OECD, which is the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development, which works to assess how well students, how well students are performing across the world, the globe. So they designed a test that's based on the PISA framework. The PISA is a fairly famous test. We hear about the PISA results on an annual basis when we read articles about can our students read and how have they been faring over the years? That's usually based on the PISA assessment. So this is a test designed from the PISA framework. So it's not a content test. It's not testing your content from like a curriculum. It's testing your application of knowledge and your ability to grapple with difficult concepts and how to apply that knowledge. So that's what this test is testing. And it's administered to 15-year-olds. So we had, we gave them our breakdown of students and we, they randomly selected students for a sample that we tested last year. This test was administered in December of 2022. We got the results back at the end of last year in June. So we didn't have time for me to share the results for you before the end of the school year. So I wanted to share them now. And I'm going to present a few summary slides. The full report is in the packet. And certainly if you have time to review that and have further questions, I can certainly come back and answer those questions. So we'll break it down a little bit. So to talk about this slide, the three content areas we assess in our reading, mathematics, and science. And what this is showing is the green hexagon is our students in Byram Hills. And the circle here with the American flag are U.S. schools. And there were, let me go back, 164 U.S. schools that were tested last year. And this blue dot are international schools. So that's schools across, outside the U.S., but around the globe. And there's over 11,000 schools that were tested. This is optional, obviously, schools up to take this test. So what this graph is showing at all three areas, we outperform the average of U.S. schools and international schools, and fairly significantly. If one of those dots fell within the green band, that would mean it would not be statistically significant. But this is showing that we outperform the average of U.S. schools and outperform the average of international schools. That can be said with 90% confidence. So in this particular graph, the mean score is 500 and the standard deviation is 100. So you could see the significance of our outperforming the average of U.S. and international schools in reading, in math, and in science. And we're well above the average of all those schools together.
How do you select the sample?
It's based, they look at our entire population and base it then so that we have a representation across genders, socioeconomic status, other demographic information.
And they do the same thing with other schools?
Exactly. It's all, they use a particular model. They were very particular about it. They sort of gave us a list. And then they said if we, we couldn't just eliminate any kids, but if anyone was opting out, they would swap kids out that fell within the same type of demographic that needed to represent.
And it's not just a student performing at a certain level? It's really like they're just a compilation?
Absolutely, yeah. So this is not just one group of kids. This was across, across the spectrum of students.
Got it.
Yep. Yeah, so that was a really interesting result. When we met with the organization and they reviewed our data with us, they, they thought this was quite impressive of our students. I'll give a little more detail. On the next slide, you'll see one that breaks it down by performance level. They give performance levels on a one through six scale, where the red is below, it's a level two or below, no, below level two. The light blue is levels two, three, four. And the dark blue is levels five and six are the highest levels of performance. So what you can see in Byram Hills, in reading, for example, we have, it looks like about a little less than 40% of our students scoring at level five and six. It's a bigger bar than the United States or the international schools. And we have less students in the red. We have very few in reading. And it's way lower than the U.S. or OECD. And that's what we didn't want. So again, this shows even by the depth of the level rating when you break it out that way, we're outperforming the other schools as well.
Do they name the other schools of the...
I don't have the name of the other schools, no. No, I don't know if they would.
Or states they're from? Or what they were most curious about, where they would be represented from?
That's not in this particular report, although they were able to tell us in some cases. One, if I go back to this graph, they told us in math that we are about at the same rate that Singapore was in schools from Singapore in mathematics. And we were with it statistically significant. And they said in reading, we outperform most provinces in China. So they knew that? I didn't, that's not in our report anywhere. So they do have that data. I don't know if they've shared all of this or not. So that was good to know. So this shows us, the levels again, shows us both in all reading, mapping, and science, that we tend by performance level, outperform all the other schools. Digging a little deeper, they give us some subscores in reading, math, and science. So when you look at the reading subscores, there's three different categories. And again, we're outperforming in all of those categories. And I could explain what each of those categories are if you're interested. If we go to math, and science is going to be similar, and I'll point that out. If you look at interpreting outcomes, that's looking at the application of the mathematics and how the answer applies in a real-life situation. And our students well outperform that. It's closer in these other two. Formulating is one's ability to take a real-world situation and turn it into a mathematical representation. And employing is more of your, just solving your problem. That's your content, your skills, and your procedures. We're lower in those than this. And when we had our meeting, they pointed that out as being interesting to explore. Why the difference between our students, strong difference here in interpreting outcomes, but less in those other two areas? They thought that was interesting to sort of unpack in our curriculum. And you'll see a similar trend in science. The interpretation is we perform higher than the other groupings than we do in these first two.
Is that intuitive to the departments? Or are they scratching their heads and...
Yeah, they're scratching their heads right now. We're having some questions. So we share this with the department chairs and we're having some conversations about what questions might this generate? So we can dig in and unpack that a little bit. So it gives us some things to question there. This test does also look at students' attitudes towards school and toward learning. And you can see our students, 80% of our students believe they learn, what they learn in science is important for their future. 85% of our students observe their teachers providing individual help to struggling students. What I like about that data piece is that's our impression from adults. We believe that we offer a lot of extra support. And I would say that our teachers are always there to support our students, but our students see that as well. So that was a nice confirmation of what we observe as adults and teachers and administrators. And 13% experienced noise and disorder. That's a good number. You want that low. You don't want that to be a high number. Social emotional skills. These are some relationships between the students' social emotional development and the academic performance. Classroom disciplinary climate is described as self-control. So to me, that's a good thing that kids have self-control in the classroom. It's not one of, say, compliance or disorder, It's not one of, say, compliance or disorder, or there could be other words that maybe aren't as positive. So self-control is a positive word for students. It describes the climate. Students perceived health is optimism and their overall life satisfaction is optimism. So that was sort of nice to see as well, with that affirmation that our students do sort of feel good and have a positive outlook on life. So one area that did come up as something for us to ask some questions about was in the area of gender differences. So in reading and science, there's no statistically significant difference in how students perform by gender, but they did say that there seemed to be a difference in gender between, in mathematics, with boys outperforming girls by 71 points.
Is that statistically significant?
Yes, that's why they pointed it out here. So it does get us to explore that a little deeper. So it is a question we're looking at and asking ourselves in our math curriculum. I did just an initial comparison and some other data just to see if it confirmed. Now, from my own experience as math chair, that was, I did look at the gender performance in our curriculum in the eight years I was math chair and never found that difference in either enrollment or performance. So it was something surprising to Lisa and she's looking a little deeper. So I took last year's AP Calculus courses in AB and BC. And we had, 54% were female in those courses and 45 male. And when you look at performance, males do perform slightly higher. I'm not sure this is statistically significant, but 22 males or 85% scored a three or better were 77, which is still 24 students, 77% scored a three or better. So, you know, that was just something to see. It wasn't way off balance, but a little bit there. And then while I can't share this, the 2023 test results with you, I didn't think this would be against the embargo of sharing the gender differences. So I was able to look at last year's three through eight tests. And I also looked at Algebra I. And I looked at the difference in the students performing proficient and took the proficiency of males minus the proficiency of females. And it's fairly close in grades three and four. It does peak in grades five and six and then starts to decrease again. This is just one test in one year, so I'm not sure it's significant. I would want to also go back and we're going to look for multiple years and see if there's patterns forming there, if there's any changes in that gender differences. Now remember that OECD test tested 15 year olds. So we're not quite to there yet on the algebra test, but we would want to see what might be happening at that age and testing. It's, some similar tests I could look at at students within that band for one. And recognizing that is one test and it could have been a random thing as well.
And they could potentially have been in one of two grades, right? Like they were 15.
Yes, because they do span.
Freshman horizontal.
Exactly. And there's actually a certain month as well that they use. It's a very specific grade band of like 15, three months to 16, two months or something like that.
Does OECD data in general, does the piece of data in general show a difference between gender or is it very, very similar results?
Yeah, you know, I'm not sure I asked that. Yeah, that's interesting to know. And it might vary from school to school, across the thousands of schools that took it. So something we're going to keep asking questions about, it's good data. So this was good data for us just to have a benchmark of an international test that is outside of a state test or a locally developed test. We thought this would be some way to just say, how are we doing?
Every test is criticized, but this test is really, I mean, it's universal and people tend to think it's better quality than many other tests out there.
And there's a lot of data to compare it against in terms of their norming. And so their report goes a little more into some detail and gives some more analysis and you can certainly look through that. But it's just another benchmark test that I thought, why not try it and see if it uncovers something that we might want to explore further.
Yeah, really interesting.
I'll just briefly go through these to end my report and to remind you about our I Ready Diagnostic Assessment. So what I want to remind you of is that I Ready is a sort of a screener or a diagnostic test. It's to give us information three times a year. We administer the test at all grade levels in kindergarten through fifth grade. And it's to give us information about, that we can use with other data to determine if we have to provide services for kids. It's all about intervening and getting kids up to grade level by the time they get to high school, middle school and high school. So this data isn't meant to be like a state test, a summative assessment, but more of a diagnostic. So we're looking for growth from the beginning of the year to the end. So in our reading data at Coman Hill, this is all K2 data. Where we want to be is in the green. So we test in the fall. We also test in the winter, I didn't include that. Then we test in the spring and we're looking to see if kids are progressing to meet grade level standards by the end of that time period. So this data we unpack, so those kids who are in the yellow or red, we dig deeper and we provide intervention services if needed, if our other data shows they need services. So it is a way to progress monitor students throughout the year as well as some other data. This breaks it down in math and reading into some subgroups so we're able to see what area students are struggling in. I won't go through all the details of the grade levels here. This is WAMPUS, again, in reading of three through five. Again, you see the change there and we analyze the students. So we have this data from the spring. When we get the state results in July, we do some cross referencing to see if they're the same students or if one of the tests is missing students. So we do some analysis that way. And that determines the groupings for academic support in September. So we can hit the ground running. I'll go to mathematics. And again, Coman Hill, you just see the results there. And I won't go through the grade level. And then in math, WAMPUS three through five.
The improvement is significant and consistent.
Right, it is all the time.
Through the years and the subjects.
And what I'll look at when we get the New York State test is how does this data compare to the New York State results in three through five? I'll have that data to compare and we can do a little cross referencing with that data. So when we have that, I'll bring that into my report and show you again. That's when I can look a little deeper at the grade level data. And quickly, I'll go through a few goals. Some of these appear in our board goals. We have our, this should say 23, 24, sorry. So we are continuing our focus on literacy, either at the next board meeting or after at some point I'll have more specific literacy goals K5. If you'll recall, last year we finished our literacy study. I met with all the grade levels, got feedback from them, from our takeaways. And then over the summer, I worked with Peggy and Dave to develop some goals. And we're now going back to the teachers to close the loop on that conversation. And then we'll have a document to share with you, which will define very specific goals, K5 and literacy. So I'll have some, some of those include an oral language proficiency program that we may pilot in kindergarten. We're analyzing that this month. We are convening a multi-tiered system of support. That should be MTSS. Sorry for that mistake. The design team so that we can develop our MTSS, which is the way we support kids who are falling below grade level standards. Orton Gillingham Strategies. We have, as Jen mentioned, 10 teachers who are participating in the practicum, which is an intensive process to go through throughout the entire year where you have a mentor from, who oversees the program, the professor of the program, who will work with the teachers and evaluate them. The teachers have to submit lesson plans eight times throughout the year and get critiqued on how they're implementing Orton Gillingham Strategies. Very intensive process. Teachers will be certified to be able to deliver Orton Gillingham, be Orton Gillingham certified as teachers for tier two and three, I mentioned, with students. So it's really an amazing process. And we're going to continue at the secondary level to expand upon our writing portfolio project and authentic writing experiences for students. In math, we're working on differentiation, differentiating math tasks and games in grades K and five. That's also working with our advanced learner teacher and some consultants to help us with that. And piloting two math intervention programs and a screening tool to help us with interventions in mathematics K5. And we'll also be evaluating accelerated pathways from grade seven through 11 with Lisa as we look to see now that we've been implementing that acceleration pathways for several years, what is the data telling us so far? In science, we are piloting a science program, K5, and conducting self-assessment in preparation for our tri-state visit next year. And continuing to integrate historical thinking skills in the curriculum and social studies and working on students' speaking proficiency in the world of languages. And this are some of our amazing leaders from last year that are out changing the world right now as they start their college careers. So that's part one of an assessment report without.
What it leads me to ask is, we have, the board has goals for, for data, right? For looking at data and how we do that. And knowing that we are looking into branching minds, but also hearing a tremendous amount of data tonight, I'm wondering where, where the bridge is to maybe what some of the expectations you were talking about and what happened here tonight? Is it that it is a platform for all of this really good information so that you can see across years? Is it more of a, you know, when the guidance department does our sort of profile? Is the data, you're thinking more of that profile?
Such a good question.
Right. It's something for us to keep talking about.
It is, because I think at the end, it's, the ultimate question is like, what do we, how do we want to measure student outcomes?
Yeah.
There's no question that this is a component. We care about academics. These are measures where at least we can compare ourselves to the world around us because many of the measures are hard to compare to the world around us. So they're important as a metric, but we all know it's not the full picture. So then the question is, you know, how do we measure mental health? How do we measure extracurricular and athletic involvement? How do we measure the other things that we might want to measure? And that's, that's kind of what I think about. It's like, how do we get a full picture? But this is phenomenal in terms of granular data around, around test scores.
Right.
Yeah. So I guess, just to continue, it's about what does the pie look like for the complete data picture? I mean, that's where the discussion starts to go.
Right.
Because there's so much here. I feel like I've learned everything from what we're working on to how we compare nationally to AP exams to, but what, what really is the full pie that we can look at to say, this is the data that you see for every child and for the organization as a whole? It's good.
Yeah.
Conversations.
Good conversations.
A little more on things like students' attitude toward learning in this full report. So there's some breakdown by some topics in there. So that gives a little more detail in this report as well, which is good benchmarking.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Tim.
Moving on to 10.2, the NISBA annual meeting.
The board has the vote to make me the delegate.
To make you the delegate? Okay, so we are going to, we have a motion to appoint Lori Tanner as the delegate for the NISBA annual meeting.
Second.
All right.
So on, on this note, please read through all 56 proposed resolutions. And if you have any issue or any comments that you would like me to make at the annual meeting that Scott says goes to midnight, I will be happy to make them on your behalf. And I'll consult with Scott before the meeting as well.
Thank you for taking that on, Lori. Greatly appreciated. On our behalf, and we're moving on to staff reports.
Okay. Yep, that's fine. I have more to talk about. Great. So first, we have our board retreat taking place on Tuesday, November 14. And in the minutes, we have our agenda for that night, which I feel really good about. Thank you to Jason and Mia for meeting with me and our consulting. And if, if the board has any other questions about that, just let us know. But I, I feel like that is a great start to our retreat planning. I want to talk for a second about our better school calendars, which are phenomenal. Thank you, Gina, for all the hard work and everybody else who's involved. Laura. Yes, right. About the school calendars, the district has always mailed the school calendars out to every member of the community. And we receive quite a few people who, who ask us not to send it, right? And so in order not to waste, for the 2024-25 calendars, we are going to send them to school residents, right, who have children in school. And we are going to order many copies for this first year in the district office. We'll put out notices and we'll put it on the website for anybody who did not receive a calendar and would like one. We are really happy to give you one, but we don't want them in everyone's recycling bins. So that was a good choice. I'd like to let everybody know that Governor Hochul approved the Asian Lunar New Year as a holiday moving forward. It is not affecting our current calendar for 2324. It will affect our calendar for 2425. We have library renovations, proposal for taking monies from the Capital Reserve that I will begin to talk about at our next Board of Education meeting with a presentation for the community to understand the magnitude of the projects with an S that we plan to work on as part of that Capital Reserve request. And the last one is just student highlights, which we had quite a bit. I love the welcome backs. I love all the smiling faces of these kids. Go ahead, Tim. I have a couple of them here, everywhere from elementary to the high school. I want to congratulate our national merit semifinalists, Samara Brown, Aaron Les, Daniel Nidaj, Alex Woodworth, Yu Sheng Yang, and just hot off the press today, Cyrus Ali, who's not pictured because we just learned of it today and wasn't there for the picture. But congratulations, that's a lot of semifinalists. And that's fantastic. I wish them all luck in this. And we had, we just found out, we haven't published the names yet, 20 national merit committed students, which is the most that we've ever had, I think, which is pretty interesting.
Yeah. Do they know?
They are finding out, like we literally just found out this afternoon. So also our artists shine with all state honors. You are going to see a familiar face, Aaron Les there again, talented, term bonus, has a spot in the All-State Symphonic Band and is going to showcase his skills at NISBA at the All-State Conference in Rochester. And we had two alternates for the All-State Mixed Chorus, Morgan Hecht and Alto and Valentina Marino, soprano. Congratulations to you guys. And changemaker, this is amazing, Nicolette Vitaj, her inspiring initiative to address educational challenges in underprivileged children in Kenya. I don't know if you recall Ken Kaplan, who is in these pictures in the white T-shirt on the top and the blue T-shirt with the white cap down here. Ken was a teacher, a special education teacher in Byram Hills, who really devoted his life's work when he wasn't in Byram Hills and now post-retirement to working on this. And what Nicolette did was she organized this Spike for Scholars volleyball. She raised $1,600, 600 beyond her $1,000 goal and spent time working with these various school programs. And the surplus will support various school programs, including funding a chess team's trip to nationals. So just pretty amazing. Good initiatives. And Chris Walsh, go about it.
Can I ask you a quick question on the retreat? It says seven o'clock, but did we?
Six o'clock.
Yeah, did we agree to six o'clock?
Yes, we agreed to six o'clock.
All right, I'll check that. Thank you. Everyone has their own.
Yeah, of course.
And I will send out the self-evaluation form prior. I don't know if some of you have done it already, but we'll redo that.
Great. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Done?
Yes, I can't report about sports from this afternoon because I'm not sure what happened.
And just to let you know, you have a hard copy of the administrative goals for this year on your desk. It's also electronic in the report packet. And next month at October's meeting, we'll have our administrative team here to talk about the goals. So it certainly is going to give you a month in advance preparation. It's a 40-page document with lots of details about all the things our administrators are working on. And we'll have the opportunity to have that conversation with them next month.
Oh, you have until next meeting, actually, to tell me about your proposed, what you want for the NISBA proposed resolutions? Because I thought it was after this. So you can let me know then.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim. Kelly?
Just quickly, the state released a guidebook, a roadmap.
Is it 400 pages?
It's only 146 pages.
146.
146.
That's actually not bad.
And then they have a, what they call, I think they call it a roadmap. And it has 12 sections and only six are complete as of right now. So we're missing an additional six sections. But I'm going to be presenting on that sometime this year, a plan going forward with this. And we've got some guidance from the state, so that's always welcome.
It is interesting because it breaks down, these are the steps you have to take to determine what kind of energy, like what kind of receptacle you're going to be using to charge your buses. There are many different options. This is the process that you're going to take to organize your bus fleet. I don't know, it breaks it down pretty easily. I mean, each part is pretty intensive, but.
Yeah, we've been begging for a guide.
Yes, yeah.
That's good. Let's hear it for me.
Thank you, Kelly. Gina? Moving on to staff report. We attended, Lori and I attended the A webinar on school shootings.
With Gina.
With Gina. It was very, very interesting, very sobering. Really, really, the speaker was great. She was somebody who, as well as being a researcher and an expert in this, in the field, she also was a former student from Portland. It was really, it was very.
Very knowledgeable.
She was very connected.
I asked a question and she immediately had resources. We should use her as a resource if we, should we never need her, but if we ever need her?
So interestingly enough, Gina's been studying her work in her doctoral program and already has her book and has read through her book and was like a little shocked to see her today. We star, star family?
I was just like, her name's Jacqueline. And then I looked at her and I was like, that's her. She's like it in that field in terms of.
She seems to have all the resources at her fingertips. Like nothing stopped her. What's her last name? Sorry, I should never do that to her.
No, it's very, it's difficult to pronounce, but it's, she and another, it's Shildkraut and another researcher by the name of Nickerson, last name is Nickerson. They seem to be it in that field in terms of a lot of research.
I mean, the data that she could just rattle off at her fingertips was pretty amazing. That's it for me. Anybody else?
I just had briefly about the, I attended the first BHEF meeting of the year. They are already gearing up for their fundraising efforts for this year. They have multiple events and fundraisers already planned, including the upcoming movie night on High School Turf. Their holiday online auction will be. Their holiday online auction will be happening again this year. They reported that they had a back-to-school night for kindergarten parents again. Had a great turnout. They said it was fantastic. That's wonderful. They gave an update on the grants and progress at the various schools. We got to hear a little bit about that. At Wampus, the beautiful collaborative wall mural and the Lernature, which is reported to be amazing. The kids love it. It's a great success. The science equipment is being put to good use. And so I told them, as always, we appreciate the collaboration with them. We appreciate their time and effort and all their fundraising.
Dr. Lomia and I went to the kindergarten BHGF school night. And I have to say, the energy in the room, I think almost every parent came to it, which was incredible because we ended up, they ended up switching it inside. And there was tremendous energy and excitement to get involved.
Thought it was a great idea that they, that they're holding it now right after the back-to-school night.
So it's literally right in the, you know, I showed people right into libraries. So they had, it was, yeah. So and they got to see the hub and it was really, it was tremendous. And Dr. Lomia was amazing at walking around and, and meeting all the new parents.
Lori had a whole neighborhood of parents.
I did, my whole block is kindergarten. And I have to say, invite me back to Coman Hill anytime. I love the parents with the bellies, like it's such a like.
Yeah. We like that. Seven, eight, expected mothers there. And a lot of your prior students are back, which is such a.
I noticed that last, last time also when I was on the BHGF, that a lot of people who grew up here circling back. It's wonderful. It's really nice.
And that's something that BHGF wants. They always want someone who went, who grew up here. So please, if you're listening, put your name in the hat for the BHGF because we love to keep their decisions in mind.
Thank you. Any communications to the board to report? Nope. Okay, approval of the board minutes from July eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Abstained.
And August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Abstained for both.
We can do it separately maybe.
Okay, because you weren't there. Okay, so let's start with July eleventh. Motion?
Somewhat.
Second.
All in favor? So moved.
Two abstentions.
Two abstentions.
And two abstentions, sorry.
So I wasn't at the last meeting, so abstained from that one.
So we're going to do August twenty-ninth now, right? That's the one you missed. Motion to approve?
Somewhat.
All in favor?
But.
Abstained?
Three.
Three abstentions.
Three abstentions. It was a small meeting last week. Okay, yes. Motion to adjourn.
Somewhat.
Second.
All in favor?
And a happy birthday to Kelly Cyrus. Happy to be on public television.
Last year was my birthday and being, yeah, it was my birthday. First, my birthday, first Thursday.